Well, thank you. You see, you're wearing this really bright yellow shirt. And someone said, "You look like a purse or something." I said, "Okay, I'll take that."
I'm good.
Okay. Good afternoon. We will call the Child Services Committee meeting to order. We're going to room Chris Rogers County Board.
Pam Murphy County Administration.
Kim Bolo County Clerk.
Jim Kavanaugh County Board.
Mark LaFlore Douglas County Youth Center.
Mark Kraft Douglas County Board.
May Pancake Operation Youth Success.
Sean Kunkier Juvenile Assessment Center.
PJ Morgan County Board.
What was that again? He gets confused. He's over seventy, what the hell. Anyway, my name is Mike, well, I represent the Sunshine District. We're in it even though the sun isn't shining. This is District Number One.
Anybody from the public, you can put your name on record if you want. You don't have to mandate it to.
We had Ms. Jan Rosie in the background there. You need your name.
If you want, look, if you want to put your name on record, just say it out here. You do not have to. All right. Let's do this, the first three items, A, B, and C. Karen sent our word ahead for some brief updates, just to get an idea if there's anything there. So when I say brief, I'm thinking five minutes, each of you all to give us some brief updates. And then we'll go to presentations on Mark.
Youth Center through February, our average daily population of ninety. Our let to stay, when we included those youth that were in twenty-four hours or less, is at twenty, which is just slightly up from last month. It was at seventeen. Home program, we actually are up to thirty. We had thirteen admits during the month of February. And overall, our admits were reduced. We were at ninety-five in January and sixty-nine through February. That's where we are. Did you need program updates?
Yeah, if you were, and do you want to do?
All of our programs are effectively starting again this go-round. Of course, U-turn is one of our biggest draws. It's an opportunity for those getting involved youth to get, to get some opportunity choices so they can be redirected, given the chance. And that, along with Dust to Dawn, has really proved to be a very, very good team with regards to giving folks some opportunities to see what a redirected look looks like as opposed to some of the previous behaviors. So both the U-turn and Dust to Dawn is doing quite well. We haven't officially started our psychiatric piece yet, but we're anticipating that rollout in April.
There was a wonderful article on one of the TV stations about those two programs and talking about the success and the future of them. So, yes, it was wonderful.
Well, it's, they certainly work well with our population of youth. They really, they really do a good job targeting what some of those issues are. Thank you, sir. That's all I have. We look alike.
I don't know if this is a question for you, Mark, or for someone else who might want to answer it when that comes appropriate. But I'm mostly curious, I'm quite curious about how the diversion programs, the ones that are supposed to be stopping the youth from coming in and if they're in, getting them out. I'm really interested in how those, I call them the alphabet agencies, and how they're, how they're performing. You know, how many, they have on a certain date, how many are in their place, and a date later, how many are there, and where did they go and all that. That's what I want to get to because I've got to cast a vote on whether or not we build a youth center that's going to be in a static space that will not be able to be expanded. So I want to, these programs have got to be working, in my book, now. I know it's a few years off before that happens, but that's where I am and that's where I want to talk, what I'd like to know today from folks.
Sure. Well, certainly, Jack, they can talk more directly about those services. As, as we move forward, where we'd like to be able to track, to be able to say what alternatives are working best. We know that effective June first, I mean July first, that individuals twelve and under won't be allowed. So that's going to drive the need as much as anything because that, that won't be an option for youth that, that are brought to the youth center. I, I would say that there, there isn't a global overarching screening tool that's, that's overall being used by all of the alternatives to detention. But I, I think it would be a, a good tool to have, a tool that says that where youth are going, how long they're staying there, and whether or not it was a successful discharge or not when they leave that place.
See, that's what I think, I get the impression that's what the commissioners and others saw in Minneapolis and wherever they went, that they saw these programs that were functioning and a city like Minneapolis had eleven people in jail or something crazy in, you know, facility and had all these other people somewhere else. And that's kind of, they came home and said, "We can do the same thing. This is best practices." And I'm kind of going, ah.
Well, now, if you want to, we can, we can talk about another business because that's really not the deal. But I can answer that.
All right.
You got anything else?
I'm going to keep asking. I know. That's all I have.
Okay. Shada is not here.
Operation Youth Success hosted.
I'm sorry, I have a follow-up question for him.
Go.
Mark, we hear a lot about this, the new law coming in that won't affect twelve and under, only children twelve and under. What's our current average population of children twelve or under?
I believe we have three at this time.
Out of the population of?
Out of eighty-two.
Thank you.
Okay. Janice?
Operation Youth Success hosted National Runway Safeline Training and Trainer Event last week, two weeks ago. Time goes too fast. We had thirty individuals participate in that and the really, the curriculum was focused mostly on, not necessarily that they ran, but what are they running from or running to, but mostly what they're running from and how can that be addressed in their safety. So when they presented curriculum, there's different modules, but as a trainer, you don't have to run one through fifteen. You can do Module Ten if it applies to your population. You can pull out a piece of that and even of that one module and do it specifically. There's no time constraint, so it can, it's extremely flexible. So these thirty individuals now to participate in that have also basically volunteered to at least teach, train two classes a year. So we should have a pretty vibrant group of trainers to help with, even when you talk about preventative measures, some of those things, so that we can address and meet youth where they're at as opposed to getting them in the system or even deeper in the system. The other piece is the Families Work Group received funding to contract with melee mason videographer to do vignettes, video vignettes. Yeah, that was a mouthful. To do, just once, I can't do it three times in a row. They'll do system point vignettes for orientation, basically, for family members or youth about what the courthouse looks like. This is what you can expect. This is the front of DCYC. This is probation. And each system point will have their own five to fifteen minute video vignette. The Juvenile Assessment Center will be one in those things. And then they'll just be played on a loop at different visiting rooms or lobbies in, at these locations so families can get familiar, kind of an orientation. We'll have it on our website. We'll send it out to everyone once they're done and produced. So hopefully, it can be just available to the general public before they're actually in contact with the system. Hopefully, that'll be wrapped up by the end of June fiscal year, fiscal year driven.
Very exciting.
So, yeah, we're really excited about that. And that came out of the Families Work Group. Any questions?
How's that funded?
Community-based aid dollars.
Okay, what does that mean? Is that the state or somebody?
State.
That's the state money, yeah.
Community-based?
Based aid, the CBA.
And I, I guess it's kind of like, if the child is, if I'm getting this right, if the child is going to be coming into the youth center, they can watch on television whatever all the buildings look like and what the.
It's nothing to do with youth.
Well, it could, yeah, it will. That'll be one of the touchpoints that we'll have, like, here's the outside of the building. Here's where you can park. Here's what you should wear, you know, leave your cellphone in the car.
Well, let me say, the bigger piece is, I'm in it in context of you doing this as a response to the family group about what they expect system-wise. It's can't, I mean, as DCY, as DCYC being part of the system, it's not just directed about DCYC. The family group is addressing the whole system in DCYC.
Correct. Right, they're one of the points. It'll be probation, Juvenile Assessment Center, courthouse, public defender's office, county attorney, just kind of a group of court staff.
I'll be honest, it sounded really intimidating. I was a kid and I was getting picked up by, freaked if I saw the county attorney's office. I mean, I.
I think it's intimidating to walk into a cold. And that's what we're hoping is, here's, the video will be like, here's where the judge will sit and they'll be wearing this. And they'll be the ones basically presiding over your hearing. And here's where the county attorney will sit. And here's where you'll sit and, and those kind of things. Just a real, trying to take the mystique and the mystery and the trauma and intimidation as much as we can minimize and mitigate it for the youth and family.
That makes sense.
We're, we're doing something similar for those families that come into detention as well, where they get an overview of detention and what services are available. And where, where our first one, our second one is actually April first. And then we do one the first Monday of each month to give parents information. And it's a pilot for now, but we're going to look to expand it where we can do one during the day, one during the evening, and hopefully get up to three during the course of a month.
What, Mark, what is your funding source? General?
Yeah, the youth center has some, but typically it's me or Levon.
Okay.
That does most of the funding for that.
I'm just asking because I thought maybe they could do it because they have a source of funds or kind of, it's very similar to what Sol was saying. Might consider.
Yeah.
I'll call again.
I will. And I'll answer.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, thanks.
All right. So, I see, let me lay the context. Basically, board group contracted last week. This is beginning of year two of a project that the JAC has been doing that was funded on a grant, basically to kind of assess it, get some feedback, and then at the end make some recommendations about what updates and improvements can be done to put us on point for best practice, but also what's the next level we need to go to to be able to address the causes upfront. So that's my synopsis of it. They'll lay it out in detail in the presentation. So if you want to introduce them or they introduce themselves.
You, you want to go ahead?
Hi, I'm Sarah Roberts. This is Lindsay Van Deen with Category One Consulting. And we're going to be talking to you today about an evaluation study that we're conducting on behalf of the Juvenile Assessment Center. Okay, so, did anybody see that? Like I said, we're going to be providing an overview of the Juvenile Assessment Center Evaluation Study that we've been conducting. I do want to let you know that the evaluation study is being implemented in two phases. Phase one is, was focused on evaluation planning, so setting the stage for everything that we need to implement the evaluation. And the actual evaluation is being implemented in phase two. And we're going to be talking to you today about kind of four different components. We'll start out with an overview of the JAC or the Juvenile Assessment Center so you have everybody in the room has a kind of a clear and consistent understanding of what the JAC is, what it does, how it provides the different services that it provides. And then we'll go into a little bit about the study background, including what this originated from and why we're conducting it. And then we'll give you an overview of both of those phases. Phase one, which was the planning, and phase two, which is the implementation. Starting off with just a little bit about the JAC.
Yeah, so the JAC started in Douglas County in 2003 to really help divert youth from the formal juvenile justice system. In their earlier years, they focused mostly on delinquency cases and have kind of taken on additional case types over the years. In 2014, for example, they started partnering more closely with the Douglas County Attorney to serve truancy and parent referrals. And then kind of over the years as well, really serving higher-risk youth in kind of more serious cases, so adding additional youth as being eligible for the JAC process. In two, or 2018, they received 2,821 total referrals from all of our current case types. So that includes delinquency cases, truancy, parent referrals, and then duly-involved youth. So those are youth who are involved in the juvenile justice system as well as the child welfare system. Oh, and then the picture there is the kind of informational one-pager that the JAC has to give a little better understanding of what the JAC does, why they do it. And when we send the PowerPoint, we'll also send a copy of that. The JAC process, so we wanted to give a little overview of what the JAC process looks like in the context of kind of more the general system. Now, as you know, the juvenile justice system is complex and variable, so this is a very simplified illustration of that. So we wanted to show where the JAC is. So the JAC pieces are in green there. Other entities are appearing in the light blue, so that's Douglas County Attorney, service providers. And then the process really starts with the youth being formally cited and referred to the Douglas County Attorney. From there, the Douglas County Attorney is screening the case for legal sufficiency and JAC eligibility. If they find that it's not legally sufficient, they dismiss the case, no further action, and the case is sealed. If they find that they're not eligible for the JAC, they go on to juvenile court or adult court. And if they are eligible for the JAC, the JAC will make an appointment with youth to conduct an assessment and then recommend actions based on that assessment. If the JAC determines that the youth is too high risk or they would recommend higher level of supervision of the system, they would send that back to the Douglas County Attorney. If they are eligible for the JAC, they send the Douglas County Attorney the recommendation. So that can include if the youth appropriate for a diversion plan, if they're appropriate to have just a warning letter. So the Douglas County Attorney reviews that, approves. The JAC informs the family of either the diversion plan or if they're going to be receiving a warning letter. If they receive that warning letter, no further action is needed and the charge is sealed. If they go on diversion, they're placed on a plan, they are referred to community-based services to really focus on that individual youth's needs and risks. And then hopefully, the youth completes diversion successfully and their charge is sealed. If not, they're sent back to the Douglas County Attorney and they face a formal court process. A little bit about the JAC approach. So the JAC is really focused on improving the lives of youth, really helping to strengthen and support youth, both youth and families, either involved or at risk of becoming involved in the juvenile justice system. Focused on diverting all eligible youth from formal processing, intervening early, effectively, and often with youth and families, really promoting the healthy development of youth. Also emphasizing the important piece of youth and family voice and figuring out their individual risks and needs to really put together an individualized plan. Also utilizing evidence-based practices, so their assessments and then making those targeted referrals to community-based services.
That's a little bit about the JAC. And we'll tell you a little bit about the study that we currently have underway. And starting out with kind of where did this study originate from, why are we doing it? So I think we can all agree that there's a strong vested interest in Douglas County of having a juvenile justice system that is effective, that's efficient, as well as equitable. And the JAC is one component of the Douglas County juvenile justice system that's focused on providing that early intervention in order to divert youth early on so that they don't become involved in the formal system. And over the years, there's been a lot of support as well as questions regarding the JAC as it relates to their process, their approach, and their impact. And so the Director of the JAC requested a formal evaluation be conducted to be able to answer those questions with, "We know this because this is what the data tells us," rather than, "Well, I think this is how it is," or, "I believe this is how it is," be able to do that using an unbiased third-party evaluation firm. And Category One Consulting, which is the firm that we represent, was selected to conduct this evaluation. And in starting this project, we elected to use an inclusive and evidence-based approach to make sure that we had buy-in from different components of the system and to build alignment on all sorts of different things, including what will we measure, how will we measure it, so that we don't conduct an evaluation and maybe in a couple of months come back and present to maybe you or other components in the system and say, "We found out this." And then get responded to, "Well, why did you measure that? And why didn't you measure this? And why did you measure it that way?" We really wanted to be proactive and have an inclusive process from day one. So, like I mentioned before, this is being implemented in two phases. You can see on the left there that phase one is focused on evaluation planning. And that took place over a twelve-month process from November of 2017 to October of 2018, again, using that inclusive and collaborative process. And that process is complete. You might wonder, why did it take a full year just to plan an evaluation? And if you have seen other evaluations that have taken place and that they went faster, we can say, usually that step in the process is expedited by conducting planning either in the background or just with one stakeholder rather than doing it publicly over the course of several months. So you'll see on the next slide a little bit more about our process, but we went out and interviewed various stakeholders and youth and families as well as met every single month to come together and align on question, research questions and goals and outcomes and how to measure. So that when we started to do implementation, we would be doing that from a place where different parties in the system are aligned on what we're measuring rather than maybe having to backtrack and tweak things and kind of redo components of the evaluation. So we're currently working on phase two, the evaluation implementation. This is going to be taking place over fifteen months, and we're assessing a comprehensive set of metrics, and that is currently in process. And you might also ask, why is that taking fifteen months? And that's because typically you might see this step in the process be expedited by you only using data that currently exists, going and pulling archival data from various systems or agencies in the organ, in the, in the system. We wanted to make sure that we were collecting data on all of the metrics that represent all of the different outcomes that we want to assess. And some of those exist today, but some of them don't. So we're able to use some archival data to answer some research questions, but we have to collect new data from youth and families in order to be able to measure the full comprehensive set of metrics. So that's why it's kind of taking a little bit longer than maybe you've seen with other evaluations, just so we can be very thorough, inclusive, and comprehensive. And we will have that process completed in January 2020. And on our final slide in this presentation, we show you kind of what we'll be doing over the next few months. And I alluded to this a little bit as I was explaining the previous slide, but the process was very important for it to be inclusive and comprehensive for four main reasons. One, it helped us to facilitate a shared understanding of the JAC by understanding what the JAC is, including why it exists, how it operates, what its goals are, by a lot of different entities in the system. Like Lindsay said, the system is fairly complex, as I'm sure you all know. And so being able to come together and have a clear understanding of the JAC before we start to determine outcomes was very important. That process also helped us to align stakeholders as it relates to the planning process. So getting stakeholders to come together and have an input in how we conduct the evaluation really set the stage for not only gathering the data and implementing the evaluation, but understanding the findings when we get there in 2020. Again, it supports future evaluation by allowing us to document the JAC process as well as the outcomes that we'll be measuring so that the evaluation can be focused on the, the right metrics and the full set of metrics rather than maybe data that's readily available. And we, we see that quite a bit in our, in our space and in our field, that you might be very eager to know the answers to your questions, so you go out and just collect data that's readily available that you can analyze. But when you do that, you might not be able to answer all of your questions. So the collection of new data will help us fill that gap. And then finally, this purposeful and comprehensive process will really to help reinforce the JAC mission in order to inform future decisions and actions. And through this process, we've already started to glean some initial findings, and Lindsay will talk about those in the next section, that the Director of the JAC and the staff at the JAC can help to implement sooner rather than later, so they don't have to wait until 2020 to take any action on, on the findings from this.
So a little overview of phase one. Really, the purpose, like Sarah said, was to have an evidence-based, inclusive, collaborative approach to build a foundation for evaluation implementation. It allowed a group of stakeholders across the juvenile justice system to collaboratively determine, gain alignment on what the JAC purpose is, what problem is it trying to solve, what process are they using, what activities do they have, what are the outcomes? So what outcomes are they trying to achieve in the short, intermediate, and long term? And then really focusing on what, what do we want to measure in that full evaluation? So a little bit about our process for phase one. We reviewed data and documents from the JAC to really understand the past and current state. We reviewed literature on the juvenile justice system and some evidence-based practice. Conducted observations across the JAC's different case types and across specialists to really understand the youth guardian experience of the JAC. Conducted confidential interviews with stakeholders, youth, and guardians, and then facilitated those stakeholder sessions each month that Sarah mentioned. So overall, voices included through interviews or the stakeholder work group sessions were defense and county attorneys, funding entities, JAC youth and guardians, JAC staff, juvenile court staff, law enforcement, policymakers, probation staff, school district staff, and service providers. So in those different alignment areas we were focused on for phase one, this provides a summary of how, what we focused on in the work group sessions for phase one. So the JAC purpose, identifying and addressing those individual needs of youth and their families to divert them from the formal system. And really realizing that each youth and family is coming to the JAC for different reasons, and there's different causes there, and there's different consequences if their needs go unsolved. As far as the JAC process, they do a lot of activities, including assessing youth, drafting safety contracts if the youth have experienced suicidal deviations either in the past or currently, or attempts, sending warning letters, creating diversion plans, making recommendations, sending referrals of those youth to community-based providers. And then doing all of these things, really focusing on some guiding principles of being evidence-based, treating youth and families equally, incorporating the youth voice and their needs and risks, and understanding what they feel they need, treating the whole youth, giving them individualized case plans, and being as timely as possible with service. In terms of the outcomes that the JAC is trying to achieve, these were generated in short-term, intermediate, long-term, and system-wide buckets. So some examples for short terms at the JAC, short-term outcomes the JAC is trying to achieve is around understanding, so youth understanding, youth and guardians understanding their own risks and needs, engagement in the JAC process, trust with the JAC specialists. In the intermediate outcome bucket, some examples are the youth's needs are addressed. Youth and guardians feel empowered and understand their risks and needs and.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
You're using all these slogans and catchwords, empowered, that the youth needs and all this, that the kid need clothes, do they need food?
Around mental health, mental behavioral.
I'd really like you to translate it into everyday language. I'm really sorry, but this, the slogan, the slogan makes me totally freak out.
Yeah, it's around mental, behavioral health needs. Sometimes they're behind in their school credits.
Does that mean they're depressed?
Possibly. There's a lot of different, they use the DPS which.
DPS.
It's an assessment that measures different psychological issues. Jack or Sean can speak.
Do you deal with trauma?
Right, yeah. So, so the things that we're.
Right, so, so the things that we're looking at when a youth comes in are more around their behavioral and emotional, educational supports, family supports, than around financial supports. You know, we're looking at their behavior in general. We are trauma-focused. We have trauma screening, and those things all fit into that. So it, it is hard to put, to summarize that, so.
I just, I, I, I'm, the slogans and stakeholders and all that. I know what you mean, but it's just, it's, it's difficult. I like clean.
Yeah, yeah.
And once people.
Yeah.
What?
Is it just people instead of stakeholders?
Lots of people.
And you have all sorts of different things that they need help with. And so we use the term needs to be able to kind of put a bucket around what all those different needs could be. But a youth like what you said.
Examples of needs, I mean, is it a woman escaping violence? Is it a child who's been traumatized by seeing their mother beat up or all this stuff? I mean, I really like, I'd like to, don't talk in general terms, be real specific. Say, we're trying to save kids who've seen the violence and their brother shot in the face and all that. I mean, I just want to know, I have a hard time with the generalities. I'm sorry to interrupt, but that's, it isn't, it'd be more helpful if it was.
Yeah. I mean, the, the JAGs serving youth vary in age. So when we did our interviews, we met with youth that were both boys and girls from age 12 to 19 that had been cited by police for a variety of different reasons and lived in a lot of different circumstances, whether, yeah. And so the, the needs, I guess they present with and that are identified through these different assessments that the JAG uses, they come up with all sorts of different things, which is why it's so important that the plan that they're kind of given to be able to help them varies a lot.
Tell me some of the needs. Money, housing, clothing?
So not really things that would be more of like a financial support around giving them clothing, or money, or cellphone, or transportation, but more of their, because there's a lot of services in the community that could connect with them with those types of things. And I know that if the JAG were to identify that, one of the youth that came in and met with me, it was cold, they took the bus to get to the interview. She didn't have a great coat during those conversations, because the assessment really is a conversation. They can identify those things and tell them about other providers in the community that could help with housing, transportation, some of those more tangible needs. A lot of the needs that the JAG is focused on addressing are kind of the reasons that maybe got a youth to be cited be from a mental or behavioral health perspective.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, for example, when I mentioned one of their activities is draft, drafting safety contracts, that really happens after a youth expresses that they either in the past or currently have suicidal ideations or attempted suicide. So that's another need that may come up in the assessment process that the JAG is addressing. Let's see. So back on, or no, long-term, some long-term outcome examples that the JAG would like to see is, for example, greater home, or greater home or school success for the youth, improvements in their decision-making, less recidivism. And then we have also a bucket for system-wide outcomes, which are really kind of high-level outcomes that we'd like to see some movement in, but aren't really specifically tied to the JAG. They're impacted by a lot of external factors and different pieces of the system. But those include, for example, less overall community crime, less strain on the system. And then also with Phase One, as we had mentioned, it was really setting up the evaluation. So figuring out our core evaluation questions, which Sarah will go into, and really focus on how are we going to, what data are we going to collect? And how are we going to gather that? So focusing on existing data and then new data sources, mostly collected through surveys. And then all of our research questions are going to be answering and examining the implementation of the JAG process, the achievement of their outcomes, and then their alignment with their overall purpose and those guiding principles. So as I mentioned, we interviewed stakeholders in the juvenile justice system and then youth and guardians. So we have some initial findings from those interviews. And we'll be doing a full evaluation, like we said, in the, in Phase Two, but these are some preliminary findings. 61% of youth and guardians said the JAG was helpful to them in their situation. 23, or 22% said a mix, and 17% said not helpful. So the 22% mix was mostly youth and guardians saying, the JAG was helpful, but I really wanted more contact from the JAG specialist. I wanted more check-ins. Or the not helpful was some youth who maybe didn't complete and then kind of failed that diversion plan. 65% said they had a positive experience with the JAG. 35% said a mix, and 0% said a completely negative experience with the JAG. So again, that 35% who said mixed really said that my experience was positive, but again, I wanted more contact. Or a guardian might say that it was positive, but I really wish my youth would have completed diversion. So those are some of the questions.
When you finish that statement, I have a question.
Okay, yeah, I'm done with that.
This is for combined youth and guardians?
Yes, correct.
Did the youth and guardians usually agree?
Yeah, obviously.
We had started the interviews thinking that maybe guardians would have more positive perceptions and youth wouldn't, like, why would a youth want to, to go to the JAG and have to sit down and have a conversation and potentially have to go on a plan where they have to complete requirements, like, you want to be out having fun, right? And what we actually found had the opposite, that there was usually a mix of youth enjoying it, enjoying the conversation that they had with the JAG specialist. The youth and parent feeling like they can have a, kind of a straightforward, aligned conversation about what they should do next. So we did find a mix, which is why we combined the data.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. We also had a mix of youth even who didn't complete their diversion plan saying they still had a positive experience, but I just didn't get the classes done like I was supposed to. And then 76% said they were actually better off because of the JAG. So we asked them, how do you think things would be different if you'd never gone to the JAG? And most described things that they were really better off having gone there. 12% said they had been the same, and 12% said worse off. The worse off tended to be youth who didn't complete. I think there was a comment around not completing, so then going through the formal court process. But if I just started with the formal court process, I'd be done by now, so things like that.
How many people were interviewed?
20 youth and guardians.
20?
Yeah.
And is that a sufficient number?
It's a sufficient number for what we're trying to accomplish with this kind of mini-study. We're really just trying to get an initial understanding of youth guardian experience with the JAG. And then we'll be looking at a much fuller sample for that Phase Two evaluation.
That makes sense.
How we decide on 20 is another technical term, but we hit the point of what we call saturation. So when we don't hear new things through the interview. So after we get done with all of those interviews, we say, are we hearing new things with each conversation we have with youth and guardians? If so, we need to keep going. And we felt like at that point, we hit the point of saturation. But for Phase Two, we're going to be collecting data from a lot more youth and guardians.
Still on youth and guardians, asked them some things they liked the most, like least. In terms of what they liked the most, they really liked the JAG staff, feel like they're very supportive and nonjudgmental. Really helped them in the assessment process and their appointment. They liked that they were able to avoid court and a permanent record. Both youth and guardians saw it as an eye-opening experience. So youth said, it really opened my eyes, like, how I was behaving, I needed to get back on the right track. Guardian saying, it really opened my youth's eyes. And then both said they enjoy the assessment process. So really liked talking to the specialist one-on-one, but then talking with their guardian in the room. Some of them mentioned feeling like this, going through this process kind of brought them closer. In terms of what they liked the least, there was a lot of consensus around what they liked least was that they just wanted more contact with the JAG specialist. I'm checking in more on them and seeing how the progress is going. In terms of what they would change, most youth and guardians.
Did they say how much frequently, or just more contact?
Yeah, just more contact, yeah.
Good.
Most people said they would change nothing. Other comments were around informing the community of the JAG and their purpose and their services. Again, that additional contact piece, some saying they want more chances to complete diversion, some saying the JAG needs to be stricter, timelier service. So that piece was around, not only the JAG, but the time from citation to when the family's contacted. A bit about explaining the process more, knowing what to expect. And what Janaye brought up should really help with that piece, so that's great. And then some comments about, from youth on the updated facility. So having more updated computers to take the assessment, or having more to do in the waiting room.
We phrase this question as if there was one thing you could change about the JAG. Like, you're interacting with the JAG, what would you change? And someone says, I don't know, I guess I have to come to the basement to meet with people. So maybe, like, it wouldn't be in the basement anymore. So I don't know if those were related, they want an updated facility, or they were kind of just trying to find one thing that they, they would recommend changing.
If I can comment on that.
Yeah.
Research has shown in retail and in various other things, people do not like going down. And they feel they're being greeted by going down. That's why granddies had their bargain basement. Penny's had their, in the basement.
Thank you. That makes sense. So some initial findings with the stakeholder interviews. Areas working well. Stakeholders feel that JAG staff are really competent and passionate in their work. They're not just punching a clock. They feel like they've established trust and credibility in the system. They're using evidence-based assessments and being successful at diverting youth from court. And they're really collaborative and on a lot of different committees that are trying to improve the juvenile justice system.
I ask you, on diverting youth from court.
Yep.
Could you start off with 4,000 children or 17 children? And could you divert 1,000, 11, 14? Do you have actual figures on what they did and what happened?
Yeah, so part of that full evaluation that we're working on for Phase Two will be looking at the JAG process and putting numbers to that. So they start with this many, this many get assessed, this many get diverted, this many get warning letters, et cetera.
So we'll be able to come back in January 2020 and give you that very detailed answer. I think even when we started this project, we thought we should be able to kind of look whole data from a couple of sources and start to get into that. How many citations are there, and how many get referred, and what happens with that? So that's part of Phase Two. So when we come back in January 2020, we'll have that.
The question you want answered, they can answer to you. I mean, that's what we discuss every month. So they're not, they're evaluating to kind of take a look to tell us what's next level to be able to serve. That's, they can get you that answer with the survey. I mean, usually reported every month at this one, this is.
Where they're going and the success.
So we'll be able to, when I come for my budget presentation, I'll provide all those numbers.
Okay, well, it really makes a big difference to me, because it's, it's going to influence how I vote. Because if we don't have the, I call them alphabet agencies, performing at 99%, then it's going to be difficult for me to say, okay, now we're going to build a static building and rely solely on that.
That program is not kind of at the heart of that, that program.
But we're not an ATD, but.
You got, you got a question?
Yeah, about something I would supply ahead of moment.
About what now?
Could you elaborate on awareness and accessibility and time to service, please?
Oh, yes, yep, I haven't even gotten into those.
Yeah, sorry.
Yep.
We're at the front end of the system, just could I?
Keeping them out.
Right. Could I make, I'm sorry, I didn't know, but could I make the distinction that we're separate from the youth center? What we're doing, our, our kids aren't facing detention. Our kids have a citation. So our process is completely separate from that. These are youth who have a law violation, and it, and the next decision is whether or not to prosecute, not to detain. So we're not an alternative to detention. We're trying to keep them from going to the court process.
You're trying to divert them from going to court.
Right, right.
Which is way farther, and what you're trying to get, I can, I'll lay out the other business piece there. There, if, if people are thinking in the context of this presentation today is about the building across the street, that's, that's not it. This is a regular presentation that we would have in respect to the JAG and its pro, its process and the discussion that's been happening in the committee about just continual improvements of the system. So this is, like you said, something that was started way before building discussion. God, this is just a, to keep the, get the board informed about where this is and what some initial findings are and where they, they need to go. So the end of the, the hope at the end of, this is more information purposes, the hope at the end of this in the next 15 months is they're going to bring some recommendations for the board, for the bigger system piece to say, if you want this to go to, if you want the next level based on what people are saying, this is what we need to do. That, that's, this presentation is to inform.
This is why, when I was talking to you, Chris, about getting a complete report from the alphabetical agencies, what I want is, I want to know, what, what are those agencies doing that replicate these best practices around the country that all of you saw? Who said, this is, this is going to save us? And I want to see what that's going to be.
Well, let me, if, if you let me get to that in the other business piece. I mean, the alphabet agencies per se are not, the point in the process that you're referring to happens when they hit the court piece. And a lot of that alphabet agency piece is us working with some other entities, which is mostly probation. So I can explain that to you in other business piece, but it's not hard to direct it to this. If you want to say long-term, it is. Because if they can keep that kid from going further, it helps. So this is like a bigger, long-term view, but it's, it's not directly what you want to get, which I'm definitely ready to.
That's probably bad news, because this is going to influence how I vote.
Well, no, it shouldn't, because this is regular committee business that we handle every month. So if you want to get to the other business piece, I'll lay that out in the, after they finish the presentation.
Well, Chris, whatever, that's what we talked about. I said, this is what I want, is a complete report of all the alphabeticals. I misunderstood what this was all about.
Excuse me, I, I have a question. So in your analysis and talking to people, particularly the system-involved people, you had to come across the fact that the children who are not diverted by the assessment thing, who end up in the youth center, right? If, if you're not diverted through the assessment process, you end up in the youth center?
No.
Okay. There's no connection between what the juvenile assessment center does and the population in the youth center? Is that what you're saying?
You could, you could come out of here, and you can go back to court, and the court may not decide to send you to detention.
I understand, I understand. But I mean, there is a connection between, if I am a kid and I come into the juvenile assessment center and they assess me, and they say, not appropriate for going to the youth center, I don't go to the youth center. Is that right?
We're not making an assessment on whether a, a youth is detained whatsoever. We're, we're making recommendations on whether they can be diverted from court processing. It, it's separate from detention. It's court processing. It's not about detention.
Okay. I'm just a poor country lawyer. But if I don't go to court, if I'm diverted from the court process, I don't go to the youth center.
No, is that?
I, I, I'm not going to end up in the youth center unless I'm involved in the adjudication process of the court, right? We're not holding people in the youth center just for the pleasure of holding them in the youth center. They're involved in the adjudication process.
They don't make that call. Probation makes that call.
I hear you.
Right.
What I'm saying is, you're making a recommendation.
I see you. I can't recognize you though until he finishes. I see you. I'll, I'll, I'll call you after he finishes.
I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just trying to get it straight in my mind. I'm seeing these children coming to the assessment center. Before the determination is made, you're going to go to the youth center or you're not going to go to the youth center. You're going to go to juvenile court or you're not going to juvenile court. Is that right?
No, the youth that come to the juvenile assessment center are not going to the youth center.
Ever.
They might have another incident later where they go to the youth center. So that's, when they, when the poor evaluators try to make a chart, and you just can't make a chart of our justice system, as everyone knows. The youth who come to us are coming to us with a charge that is not a danger to the community.
Okay.
Just to kind of, they, they would go to the youth center if their charge was a danger to the community.
Okay, so it has no effect whatsoever on that population?
No direct effect on that.
So at the beginning of your presentation, I think you, you had a number, something like 2,000 kids? Is that right? Is that an annual?
121, yeah.
That's an annual number of kids that come to the assessment center?
That was our number of 18 or 17, which. That was our number of eighteen or seventeen, which.
My friend.
Yeah.
Does that number, if you were to go back five years, vary a lot up or down? Or is that a, a static number more or less?
That's a great question and I'll be able to give more details in my budget presentation just in general today. It has changed because the laws have changed and we have taken on more cases that we were not seeing before. So our, our partnerships and the county attorney's, uh, desire to divert more kids from court has led more referrals to come our way.
I see, you can put your hand down, I see.
Have, have led more referrals to come our way. So the, the number isn't static, it is, it changes and it does change sort of back and forth over time based on things like the law change. You know, a, a couple of years ago, the kids who sixteen and up weren't going to city prosecutor anymore, coming by way of county attorney. That bumped our number up. So things like that do change it. It, it generally is consistently grown.
Thanks a lot and I'm sorry for my ignorance, I'm just trying to learn.
Thanks for making sure we're, we're clear. This is a good opportunity for that.
Thank you.
What was the question?
Yeah.
Excuse me, I'm not even a lawyer, let alone.
So Larry, let me ask you this.
Uh, excuse me, please.
No, 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 no.
From a common sense standpoint, I'm a citizen, I have a right to speak.
Larry, Larry, no, you do have a right to speak, but I'm trying to facilitate.
Without being interrupted.
No, listen to me.
I'm not out of line.
You are.
I'm a citizen.
You are, listen to me.
I'm not a stakeholder, I'm a citizen.
Well, if you're not on the presentation, if you want to hold it to the end, I'll let you do that. But I'm trying to get to that presentation. So if you want to, if you want to hold, I'll let you. I'm just saying, if you want, you got a question on the presentation?
Larry, do you have a question on the presentation?
It's not out of committee yet. So all I want to say is before it gets out of committee and, and done beyond prepare, you need to think about the unintended, unintended consequences. First of all, youth are detained for a reason.
I know, that's one, that's one, actually, it's not about detention.
Second of all, I don't think any of us give you permission to study our youth and come up with all these things. You don't show me as a citizen, as a parent, or even a youth as being part of the stakeholders there. This is all about power, it's not about helping the kids. You started this in two thousand and three, where are the solutions? Where's the success to what you've been doing?
Thanks.
Thank you.
You got a question on the, on the presentation?
Yeah.
Come on.
So, um, I have a couple of questions and I was going to hold until the end, but I have a city council meeting due to two o'clock. So you had two thousand eight hundred and twenty-one referrals in twenty eighteen. Are all of those from the county attorney?
You, can I, yeah, because you have. Yes, everything that comes to the juvenile assessment center comes via the county attorney's office.
As an alternative or as a referral to whether or not they go to court?
Correct.
Okay.
So they're, they're formal matters that go to the county attorney's office and to help make that determination, the juvenile assessment center meets with those youth.
Okay. Is there a process or a way that that can be changed to where probation can make a referral?
No.
So to where if, uh, a youth violates probation and then faces an additional charge, can that be?
To be, to be clear, these, these are youth who are not involved in court. So probation youth are involved in court. These are youth who already do not have an existing court matter.
Okay. So is there a way?
I see you.
Go ahead.
I'm saying, I see you, you, you.
Sorry.
Okay.
So is there a way that we could, because the, the justice system, it's, it's something that once you get into, it's kind of a downward spiral and it's hard to get out. And so we have to try and break that. And I feel like this is a way to potentially break that cycle.
That's what it is.
That's the goal. You're, you're right, yeah.
So is there a way that we can get those probation kids that are, that are going back to court for violation of probation into this process?
That's, that's their role. Uh, uh, we, we all have, you know, to hopefully work together, but that's the, it, really, this is separate from that.
Okay.
Thanks for the question.
Which is actually a good question, but that, that probation is literally the JAG for those youth that are involved in the system.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the data that you guys have kind of pooled and looked at, um, is that data going to wing to be public data that is available to masses?
It's public data they're looking at right now. Is this, is public data right now?
I know, but once in January, I think it was January twenty twenty, when they finalize their recommendation and their report, will that be made public?
Will be in that, will be a presentation on that.
It'll be presented.
Okay.
Uh, you, sir, I saw you with Hannah.
I see this as a component of programming which is preventative. And there's two parts of programming, which is intervention and preventative. So I encourage, uh, Mr. Boyle to, uh, protect his vote. I don't think anybody, especially in your district, Mr. Rogers, is asking the commissioners to put their blueprints before their, uh, programs. This is programmatic, you can dice it and slice it. It's on this part and this part, it's on this timeframe, but it is programmed and it's not nine hundred, no, ninety-nine percent. The preventative programs and the, uh, in, intervention programs are not in place and the designs need to stop. The nonprofit has a design.
Okay, dude, I'm asking, I'm asking, I'm asking.
And so he's, he, Mr. Mr. Boyle is one hundred percent correct and wanting to protect his vote.
No, I'm not, I'm, if you got some of the building? I asked you to wait till the end.
That's, that's, that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Okay, well then, you all continue. Let me just, let me just, again, I understand this, but this presentation is part of like regular continuing committee business. It's not about the detention. It's about the program that we run it already. So I'm going to just tell you for the sake of time, if you're trying to talk about the building, I'm going to reinvent, this is not about the building. So I'm, I'm actually, I'm going to ask that they can finish and then I'll answer all the questions.
I'm sorry, I got to go to the city council.
Okay. You all want to?
I'll raise.
Okay.
Um, so for stakeholder interviews, areas of improvement, they mentioned what, concerns over the limited or maybe unsustainable funding. Um, that was currently a piece for the JAG. A bit about wanting more awareness in the community about what the JAG does, um, and accessibility to the JAG. So there was actually mentions of opening up the JAG to youth who haven't been formally cited. In that kind of breath, they also mentioned knowing that that's not currently possible. They already have, too high of the caseload, um, with who they're currently serving. So JAG specialists typically have, um, fifty youth at any time. And most high caseloads really degrade the case management and that kind of goes back to the youth and families feeling like they want more contact. They aren't able to contact the youth as much if they have too many.
Excuse me, Chris, sorry. That's a very interesting question to me because the number of caseworkers at JAG is how many?
Nine, nine specialists.
Nine. So th- those nine specialists do these two thousand plus cases? That's right?
Right, right.
And these cases, are they, are they ongoing? I mean, if you get a file, does it last for months and months or is it a?
It depends on that individual youth. So some youth come in, have an assessment and the recommendation is a warning letter, so there's no ongoing case management. And some youth are recommended to be placed on diversion and that diversion could be anywhere from one month to five months. It depends on the risk and needs of that individual youth. So, you know, it's going to vary, um, ac- across time and any specialist at, at any given time is going to have about fifty active cases in addition to new assessments coming in and doing two to three assessments a day.
That's kind of the average, like fifty?
Right, so just to give you a little bit of context, we are, we have twice the number of caseload of any other diversion program in the state. Twice, uh, twice what SIRV does, so.
Can I ask you a question about what kind of charges? You know, I know Mr. Riley deals with, uh, young people that have guns and, and weapons and terroristic threats and things like that. Do you deal with people like that or are you just dealing with somebody who shoplifted or something?
All charges, all.
Whether or not, whether or not, I mean, it could be a serious felony?
It could be a serious charge, felonies. I don't want to, uh, throw, I, I could have Kara, the stewardess here from the county attorney's office and she reviews all the reports that come to the JAG. We see kids for every charge, so that there's no exclusions there.
And you have?
See, there are felonies that we refer, um, we don't generally refer sexual assault charges to the JAG. But other than that, even the higher risk charges, we do refer them.
And do you know, uh, you have records of outcomes, what happens, whether they're charged or not and all that stuff?
We do.
Okay, yeah, of course you would.
Thanks for that question.
Get it going, Chris.
Thanks.
Also some comments about time to service being quicker, um, some gaps in community services, mostly around mental health services and the combination of substance abuse and mental health. And then some comments about wanting some transparency around the referral process, how the JAG makes a determin- determination on what community providers are referring to and then better understanding of the JAG and their data.
Okay, that's us. Okay, so through the process with the, the people that work in the system that came together, um, we identified ten main questions that we're going to be answering with phase two. Four of them focus on implementation or like the stuff that the JAG does. And, um, how are youth moving through the jackpot process, the system pathway? Are those activities that we talked about, warning letters and safety contracts and diversion plans, are those being implemented kind of the way they were supposed to be or what we call with fidelity? Um, and are they implemented in a manner that aligns with those six guiding principles Lindsay talked about? Are they evidence-based? Are youth being treated equally, et cetera? And then finally, we're going to be examining whether we see differences in implementation based on a variety of characteristics, including the race, gender and age of the youth or guardian, um, who the JAG specialist was, what kind of case was there? So we can see whether these activities of the JAG are being implemented consistently or if they vary by things like maybe they shouldn't vary by. We're also going to be asking, um, four main questions around impact, the impact that the JAG has and looking at whether the JAG is achieving those outcomes Lindsay talked about in the short term, in the intermediate term and in the long term. And then whether those impact, uh, characteristics, I, uh, vary by characteristics too. So we might see that overall the JAG is achieving all of these short and intermediate outcomes, but we see that for certain groups, maybe the outcomes aren't as strong. So we're going to be examining all of that. We also have two additional questions that we're going to be answering with this evaluation that fall outside of what you might see in a traditional evaluation. And the first one is around resource efficiency. We talked about how the JAG have currently, case, uh, specialists typically have about fifty ca- a caseload of about fifty. So does the JAG have adequate resources to effectively serve youth and kids around individualized plans and timely service, et cetera? And finally, um, looking at their referral process, how does the JAG decide which services the youth should be referred to out in the community? How do they make that decision, is it fair decision, et cetera?
Can I ask you a question? Do you look at, do you look at family life, you know, like, uh, whether it's decent housing, uh, whether or not there's violence in the home, whether they're hungry? Whether, uh, the guardian or the parent has suffered trauma themselves, do you get any of that?
We look at some components of the household. We're not always able to look at all of those different elements for a couple of reasons. Sometimes that data doesn't sit in a data source that we can have, that we're able to have access to. And as you think about using maybe a survey or an interview to ask a family about those things that feel very private or might, they might be uncomfortable speaking about, we also want to be able to ask them questions about their, their time with the JAG specialist and did they have, were they engaged in the process and did they achieve these outcomes? And we don't want, um, we don't want to ask questions that they would become so uncomfortable answering that they don't feel like they can trust us to answer these other questions.
Yeah, the reason I ask is, I was just in Washington and they have a, and I came across a program of the school, a district in Washington DC is actually, they've had it with all this up on the clouds looking down. They're actually going into the homes of the students and looking to see, do they have food? Do they have clothes? Do they have laundry? Are they able to take care of themselves and walk out of the house? I mean, they're really getting into it, it's very intrusive.
Yeah.
It's very argumentative to say the least. But they're just desperately trying to find out how to stop this stuff.
We're trying to take kind of a broad look to answer all of these questions. The type of study that might fit maybe better with that might be some sort of case study where you could identify some families that do feel comfortable with you coming in and you've built trust to be able to do that. But we don't want to undermine, not be able to answer all of these questions because we've made families so uncomfortable with some of our other questions. Do you mind if I go to the next slide and then?
Yeah.
Will I ask your question? Thank you. Okay, so how are we going to answer all of those questions that I just kind of walked through? Um, we're going to be, uh, almost doing two studies at the same time. So we're going to be looking at historical data to answer some of those questions and pulling, um, readily available data for youth from two thousand thirteen to two thousand eighteen, which allows us to look at some of those things that we talked about in the intermediate or the long-term outcomes that might take a couple of years to happen so that you don't have to wait a couple of years for us to give you the answers to the questions. Um, it also allows us to assess a larger sample of participants efficiently because we can kind of look back in time over a larger cohort rather than maybe starting January of twenty nineteen and waiting for several thousand youth to go through the JAG process. Um, so data are going to be gathered from the JAG as well as other sources as we need them to be. That could maybe be the county, school district, service providers, et cetera. Again, data sources may have changed, so we might not be able to look at all of those things. And then we also want to make sure that we're being very conscientious about following the appropriate protocols and confidentiality agreements and, um, all of those types of things. So we'll get data, uh, from sources, um, when, when we can, but also being conscientious of, of data confidentiality agreements. So in addition to that, we're also going to be collecting new data. So we'll be using surveys to answer some of those questions on metrics that aren't currently available around, did youth and guardians feel like they could trust the JAG specialist? Do they feel engaged in the process? Do they feel like they had their individual needs, whatever they would have been met? So some of those perceptions that might not have been collected up till now. Um, we'll be administering those surveys, um, between February and June of twenty nineteen, which allows us to incorporate the youth and guardian voice in our evaluation process. And we'll also be able to give those tools, those surveys to the JAG if they would like to continue to, um, gather that feedback moving forward. So our next steps, um, we're in the middle of data collection. We'll be doing that through September of nineteen. Um, and then we need a couple of months to analyze the data and, and document the findings and then we'll be able to present that back in January of twenty twenty. I don't know, I'll let you ask if there's questions.
Okay, so here.
So do you know by chance of those two thousand eight hundred and twenty-one referral, do you know like what percentage is Latino? What percentage is African-American? What percentage is Caucasian? Do you know those demographics off the top of your head by chance?
No, not off the top of my head, no.
Um, so do you think?
That'll all be available in the data we present though.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
We have, we routinely keep all that information there.
Perfect, thank you.
Can I ask, what, what role does, uh, I know it's an important moment, but what role does trauma play in putting all of this together? I mean, are you?
A key role.
So how do you, how do you ask about that if it's not, uh, are you, uh, there's violence in your home and all? How do you, how do you determine that someone's, uh, suffered trauma?
So we have two forms of assessment. One is a computer-based screening that the youth takes alone and they're answering those questions. And so that's just them sending in a computer carol. And then there's a one-on-one interview with the parent alone and then the youth alone. So we're asking some nuanced questions and we've had some guidance in those questions from people like Mary Jo Thompson and Emmanuel, who was one of our stakeholders, who was gracious enough to be here every month helping us, um, with the Suicide Coalition. We've changed some of the ways we're asking questions in order to get to some of that. And all of our staff are trauma-trained, at least every year they go through the trauma training.
There's a film that I saw, it was produced by Robert Redford's son, Jamie, and it was, uh, they were doing a film about children who were traumatized. And what they were surprised to find out was that the, the mothers who were involved and mostly mothers, who were involved with their children and bringing them to this, that they were traumatized and they reacted. Uh, and it was really eye-opening that it goes so deep that it just sets people on a bad course forever.
They, they are the, they're the, I don't want to say, the originators of trauma for care and accountability. I couldn't get it, they got to be on it in a couple of years. And so they are, this is the agency that introduced that there. They were training other agencies here and they were the first ones to, to get on that. So that, at least here, they've been aware of it for at least the last five or six years. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
So your, your other question, I could put it on the agenda for the February second, for the April second meeting. But the, as I said to you before, the service is connected to the bill. This is how I'm taking the context with your answer. And, and talking to them, this is how they explained it to me and they said I was a good point. If you're asking for a program, where are the programs off the shelf that are going to do it? You don't have programs on the shelf because basically based on the numbers, each case and each defendant, your family is different. So the things that they, we do have available, behavioral health care, other things of that sort, you kind of take and build a program based on specific need. There's three, there's four programs right now that are in place. And I'll set those up February second for the group to see, to hear publicly in this committee for the regular meeting. And I'll set those up February second for the group to see, to hear publicly in this committee for the revenue meeting. But that's the Drew program that they're waiting to sign the documentation on, I think Mark said it starts next month. The, that handles this, this, this situation of kids waiting for the eval and having the care, that was identified out of the date. The next one is the CSI program that's gonna triage and hold kids over and make referrals out. That was supposed to start last week, it's delayed because the police are having trouble getting it to the state database. So my understanding is that should be today. The other, the other piece that's set up is, uh, shelter care for girls at Uta Hauling. And right now, it's not fine tuned, but they're working at the Omaha for Boys for some, not a, a traditional day reported center, but a day reported center that is gonna be a stabilization cause there's kids sitting there in DCYC for, uh, kind of stabilization of behavioral health and the Omaha for Boys is putting that in place. So that's the programs that are set up based on need, I'll put them there second, the second to bring to this group and, and Mary Bicek can answer all those questions, so.
See, the thing that, the thing that I feel like I need and what I really do need is before I would support building, uh, a detention center inside a finite space, I would have to know, I would wanna be guaranteed that we have programs up and running that are successful to divert them from incarceration. And, you know, I, I don't think that's too much to ask because we're making a very definite decision to say this is the space that we're going to have. And the number of children we have far exceeds the space we're willing to build. And so I, I, I really have to have that and before I have to vote because, uh, I need to know that.
I understand what you, I understand that, but the point you need to understand too is, from when we started this ten plus years ago, when we were at a hundred forty-four and we came down now, you don't, you don't do the juvenile programming narrative like that. It's never happened, you made the commitment to reduce and you've done that. You don't, you don't make the program from every, from the, from the people there in the system that have asked, you don't get it up to speed like that to start because the program you create for one person or one family, maybe just that. So, the point that I'm, I'm suggesting from the time we went into this that you should be focused on is one, we have the resource to do that. Every time we've made this change and jump, it's been state law and there's been the resources, so the state law is there now. But if you're, if you're waiting to like a program to be in place, that's not how any of them have been developed.
Kind of bad news.
No, it's not bad news, it is, it's good news, well, and that's what I'm saying, if you're basing your process on that, it's never been the process for the last twelve years. When they come into court and the judge assesses that, they put it together based on the need of that kid, you couldn't give a pre-practice call.
I don't disagree, I'm just saying, we're, we're, we're talking about closing a facility that has a hundred and forty-four beds, that has eighty-one or ninety people today and we're building a, a facility with forty-six beds or sixty-two, I argued for that and got it shelved down pretty much, but I think there's sixty-two and then there's others with other diverse, three other places coming out, which is gonna cost more money. Who's gonna oversee all that, I don't know, who's paying for that? But, uh, I don't see, you know, those are, these things that you and others saw in, in other cities need to be in place before I'd be, before I say, okay, we're gonna build this building and, um, that's all we have.
I'm not going off what another city has for a sake, I'm telling you this, waste off the numbers that we have and you can't base your decision on what happens January one, cause if this project happens, there's three years to get there and the process too of, you got, you have two processes you just described. You got the July first process of when the state law goes into effect.
Well, there's only three kids involved.
No, it ain't, it's not the context of.
Actually, there's a zero, I, I checked, we have five thirteen-year-olds that's currently at the youth center.
Yeah.
Uh, two of them that were twelve had birthdays and we have, uh, currently no twelve-year-olds.
But it's not about the twelve-year-olds, the, the, the context of that question was like just the twelve-year-olds. The law says basically, ju- you're not gonna be able to sit in there as a final placement when you're supposed to be there. Now, how I understand how it's gonna be implemented, it's not like July one comes and the doors open. These four programs and the other ones that's coming up to speed, these are getting up to speed to be able to handle that now and be prepared to do that. So as they come online, you're not gonna July one let everybody out, they find somebody. Hopefully within three, four months after that, they're down and we're adjusted out. The other piece you're saying in regards to building a facility based on programming now, you got three years to adjust that piece and there's some other pieces that are being worked on and that will be worked on while it's there, so. That's what I'm saying, the way you're looking at it is not how it happens and it's not based off Minneapolis.
It's too risky.
No, it's not, we've done it over the last ten years, Mike.
Not, you've done it accidentally.
No, we have not done it accidentally. No, you, you have not done it accidentally, the process took, you took us from one forty-four to as low as at times fifty, sixty recent law changes put it there. But I'm not talking about what Minneapolis done, I'm talking about the process that we use locally to get here. So this, this is not that.
When everybody comes back, they read about best practices they saw somewhere else.
Yeah, because that, the process is the same.
That's what I want all in place here.
The process is the same, the programming is particular to the people, but the process is the same.
I'm just saying, I want those in place cause it's too big a risk. What I see happening, if, if it turns out that we can't get by with, and we need more space, I think I predict what will happen is they will move, they'll move the county attorney out of the, the new courthouse, that's what happens.
Saying, you asking that question is like asking me to fit into a medium shirt. It can't happen because that's not the way that process happens.
Well.
And I'm just asking you, li- be open here in how the process happen, because how you want a program in place is just like, I'm not gonna go back into fitting pre-tame clothes. You don't set, you, the question you're asking is asking if something's done, that's not the way we've done it to reduce it over the last ten years. What we do, what we do have is the process, the resources, and they have the places identified. So that, that's all I'm asking.
But what I see is you're building a building, we have eighty-one and ninety kids now and you're building a building for forty-six or sixty. That's, we gotta figure out where thirty kids go, we've got kids in, we've got kids in Michigan, we've got them in Iowa. Okay, let's be sure, in case there's some people that wanted to say something about the presentation, that get them in hands.
No, we're past representation.
Is there anything else?
No, we, we're past representation, I asked them that.
No, I'm in, I'm in, are there any, they don't have anything?
Public.
Tom Riley, appreciate you being here.
I just, I just wanted to talk to the JAC representative on some matters that don't concern, uh, the presentation.
With that, we're good, thank you all.
Thank you.